Like side, okay. Okay. Alright, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started if we can go ahead and take our seats. Okay, calling the meeting to order?
Actually can't call the meeting to order, you can start the meeting with announcements.
So we can start the meeting with announcements.
Yeah.
Um, so, since we don't have quorum, um, tonight, we do only have, um, six of the required eight members tonight. Um, we are not gonna go through any official board business, or any, uh, decision making, so we are just gonna go ahead and go through with announcements from, uh, starting with HPD, uh, since they are present in person.
Aloha, can you hear me?
We do have a virtual representative.
Right, yes.
Go ahead Lieutenant.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Johnny Agoo, Honolulu Police Department, I have the statistics for Kahului. There were three motor vehicle thefts compared to two the previous month. There were zero burglaries reported, there was zero the previous month. There were seven general thefts versus two the previous month. There are two UEMVs or car break-ins compared to one the previous month. And there are actually two robberies reported versus none the previous month. That's the statistics that I have, do you have any questions?
We have eight.
Okay, sorry Lieutenant, we're just gonna go ahead and, um, call the meeting to order, um, we do have quorum officially with, um, uh, other members present virtually, so we are gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So yeah, you can go ahead and proceed, um, Lieutenant.
Okay, thanks, yeah, so that's the statistics that I have for the previous month.
Sorry Lieutenant, one second, member Bender.
So I just had a question, this morning I was, uh, waiting for the mail, and I noticed that there's an ordinary car that follows the mailman to my door, and I walked out to get the mail, and this guy spins around and drives away. And so it's pretty clear to me that the mail trucks are being followed just by people, you know, until they start the route, 'cause I'm at the beginning of the route. What should I do as a citizen?
You can definitely call 911. If you happen to get a license plate, that'd be good, it can be called in as a suspicious circumstance, or we do know that there are people who take the opportunity to steal mail or delivered packages. Yeah, I believe the kind of trendy term is called porch pirates, they steal things that are delivered that don't belong to them, so if it's a suspicious circumstance, 911, they can definitely come and check it out. The sooner the better, yeah. Because it does, it may, if the officers are off on anything else, it may take them a little while to respond, but a good description, being a good witness, you know, type of car, color, possible occupants, any kind of description like that would definitely be helpful. In this, in this, in this sense, like today's one, kinda obvious, yeah, it doesn't look right, we don't know exactly if there's a crime, they may actually have one reason to be following him. Who knows, but if it's, if it's enough to pique your suspicion, then you definitely are encouraged to call 911 and we can at least check it out.
Hey mahalo Lieutenant. Um, we don't have any, um, we do have, um, quorum now, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, proceed with the filling of vacancies. Um, so we do have, uh, one vacancy for Sub District Two. Uh, if there's anyone present or any nomination. Um, we do have two vacancies for Sub District Five. Uncle Ken.
Is, uh, Lee Gomes in the attendance? Lee Gomes?
No, he's not.
Okay, well, we'll try next time, thank you.
Thanks again. And then we do have, um, two vacancies for Sub District Six. There's nobody present. Yeah, so one in Sub District Two, two in Sub District Five, and two in Sub District Six. Okay, moving forward, um, we do have the election of officers, um, so we did have resignation of several members, um, last meeting. Um, so three members have vacated the board, um, leaving, um, us to basically have to reorganize our, um, officers, our board officers. And so the first one that would be, um, up for nomination would be the Chair of the Kahului Neighborhood Board, um, if any members have any motion.
Second.
Okay, with the motion, um, made and seconded, um, go ahead and take the vote. I, I would go ahead and let's go.
Uh, we can't hear any of this on virtual. We have not heard anything.
Uncle Ken, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Here the other members in, I think, you know, when the other members wanna speak, they either have to pick up a mic or something, we can hear it, I barely heard a second there.
Yeah, I heard a second too, yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go through that one more time.
Yeah.
Just so the members can go ahead and take the vote. Um, so we're gonna go ahead with the election of officers. First up would be the nomination of the Chair, and then, um, Uncle John had a, had a motion.
Yeah, my motion was to ask Parker to step up his chair.
Second.
Yeah, Uncle John made the motion and then seconded in by Uncle, um, Uncle Dan over here. Um, we would go ahead and take the vote.
Okay, so when I call you by last name, please state the nominated person's last name. Bender? He said aye. Lavassar?
Aye.
Lu? Uh, Arthur, Macado?
He, he's muted, he's muted. Art is muted. Get, tell him give a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Rasterson?
Aye.
Rippon? Toil? Okay, so that is with so everybody present had voted for, uh, Parker Spencer to be the Chair. Thank you.
Okay mahalo, thank you Uncle John, appreciate that, you guys. Um, so moving forward with that, we do have the, um, second nomination of the Vice Chair, if anyone else has a motion.
I do.
Uncle Ken?
Oh yeah, I'd like to nominate Dan Bender.
Second.
Okay, noting that Uncle Ken nominated Uncle Dan, and then that would be a second by Uncle John, and we will go ahead and take the vote. Okay.
Okay, so Daniel Bender accepted the position, so now we'll take the vote. Lavassar?
Aye.
Lu? Macado? Arthur? Okay. Rasterson?
Aye.
Rippon? Spencer?
Aye.
Toil? Okay, with that, um, Daniel Bender is the, is adopted for the position.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Thanks Rachel. Okay, and then, um,
Chair, may I quickly ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead Ian.
Did we also lose Kiony? Machado?
Uh, no, I just believe that Kiony is not present tonight.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Um, but, uh, we do have the filling of the Secretary, um, since I'll be taking the position of Chair. And so if anyone would like to make a motion for the position of Secretary on the Board, um, we'll be looking for a motion to do that. Uncle Dan?
I'm gonna take care of it.
I'll second that.
Second, although he's not here, so he can't accept our
Yeah, he's not here.
No drafting?
Can we defer that?
We could defer that.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go ahead and defer the, um, nomination of the Secretary to the, um, next month's agenda. And then we move on. Yeah, the treasure remain the same. Um, okay, so moving on to uh, city announcement, city-state federal report officials, um, we do have Representative, Mayor Rick Blangiardi, uh, Jiro Shiguro, um, Jiro Sumada, thanks Jiro.
Parker, can I, can I just ask, we've got HPD here
Yeah.
with some, um, you know, announcements of, uh, new positions, I wonder, can we ask if they
Okay.
So, my name is Justin Ayu, I'm the, um, Sergeant for the Community Policing Team for District Four, which covers from Makapu all the way to Kahuku. So we cover all of that area. Um, and it was a little unorthodox with our Lieutenant giving the stats about we are here, but we were mainly here to introduce our Major and our new Captain for the District. This is our commanders, um, uh, my bosses, everybody's bosses here on this side of the island, so this is Major Herbert Soria and Captain Joe Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening Chair, uh, Board Members and Members of the Public. Yeah, my name is, uh, Major Bert Soria. I'm the District Four Police Commander of this, of this side of the island, the Windward Side. Again, from Makapu Point all the way to Kahuku Point. We have three stations here, we have the Kailua Police Station, the Kaneohe Police Station, and also the Kahuku Station. We have ample staffing to take, uh, calls of police service for all three stations. And at this time, I'd like to introduce my new Captain, Captain Joe Gonzalez.
Aloha Board Members, Members of the Community. Uh, my name is Captain Joe Gonzalez, um, I've recently been promoted in December, and I just got out to District Four, um, back in January, so still getting assimilated to the area, but I'm really happy to be here. I'm glad to be a part of this community, and I look forward to working with our officers, our CPT teams, to, um, support, support the community needs out here. I'm real happy to be out here in District Four. Wish I came earlier in my career, but, yeah, thank you, thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, before we leave, any questions, any questions for my commanders?
Uncle Dan?
I understand that the Police Department generally short maybe 200 positions and every new class has about 60 members and about 30 graduate, and so that the number of people coming on to the Police Department is not matching up with the number of people retiring. What's gonna happen next? In other words, the total number of police in the whole HPD is shrinking very, very slowly. And I noticed that you identified yourself as community policing. What do we do differently without your presence? In other words, I'm I'm not, you know, qualified to tell you or even suggest what you should or shouldn't do, but just not, just being able to see you around makes a big difference to us who walk in the park over here. And there're gonna be less and less and less of you over time unless something else happens that you know about that we don't. So as the Police Department shrinks in size, what are, what are we, how are we supposed to react?
Thank you for your, uh, question, the concern. Although we have large retirements this year, we do have lots of classes going, at least two to three classes a year, or even more to fill our vacancies. But currently, island-wide, I can say this, that we are able to adequately staff each district, so there will be no interruption in police service.
Other questions? Oh, we did have a question from Uncle Ken online.
Uh, yeah, uh, I appreciate your comment about adequate service, and in fact, I think under the circumstances, you guys do a fabulous job. Um, but, uh, I'm working on an emergency program, and, uh, at some point, we'll need to know, because in an emergency, the high-density area, high-population area is gonna need police from our side to go to the high-population side. And so under those conditions, we need to know how much we're starting off as a deficit and how much we can afford to lose, and be knowledgeable that, and then use volunteers to make up, and also we have Marine Corps Air Station, we got all kind of ways of making it up, we have to plan for that. So at some point, we'll be contacting you to see, and I'm Ken Lavassar, I'm Infrastructure, um, Chair, and at, we're, we're gonna need to talk to you folks about, uh, how we handle the, the deficit, because we're realistic over here, that's why we do so well. Um, and we just need to know how to plan for, uh, a disaster, emergency, or any other contingency. So just keep that in mind, no need to give an answer now, I appreciate it.
I have a comment after, so my office is at the Kaneohe Police Station. Please stop by and visit me, make an appointment, and, uh, we can sit down and talk about any type of concerns, especially when it comes to, um, emergencies and, uh, uh, public safety. I'll be available.
And you're Gonzalez?
Uh, Soria, Major Soria.
Oh, sorry, Major Soria, oh, okay, got it right, okay, thank you.
Any other further questions? Thanks for coming out, I'm gonna put my Key Project hat on, I worked at Key, as is Joe Watt, you know, audience here. And, um, you know, our community center really benefits from a lot of HPD presence. Uh, we folks actually have access to some space here that officers can utilize if they need to get online and so on, and we appreciate that you do that. You know, we've, we've been here a long time at Key, and so there are all kinds of groups that meet here, from Keke to Kupuna, and you know, the idea of getting out in front of the community, uh, and also prevention is still worth a pound of cure, so you're welcome out here anytime, mahalo, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to just wanted to mention that, uh, there's a meet and greet with the Captain in, um, Windward Mall next Tuesday, nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven, Windward Mall, next Tuesday, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it guys, mahalo. Okay. Moving on, Jiro, thank you, thanks for your patience.
Thanks Chair, uh, Jiro Sumada, Deputy Director, Department of Planning and Permitting. On behalf of the Mayor, we're pleased to announce that the Honolulu Zoo has been nominated as one of the best zoos in America. Okay? But you gotta vote. You gotta vote. Okay, so, if you like vote, you go to this, uh, Honolulu, www honoluluzoo.org, and then you can vote. And voting is from, well, from now till March fourth. Uh, and then you can, and you can vote multiple times, you know, but if you, uh, we, I think we're ranked fourth out of twenty, or something, out of top twenty. So we're up there, you know, but the more people vote, then we get closer to the top. Okay, anyway, let me go over the, the reports. Okay. Kualua City Recycling Challenge, Rick Vermish and Board Member Jesse asked why was Hokkolua left out of city recycling, ENB replied, "ENB would like to request more information regarding the city recycling challenge, as this is not an ENB-related event." You guys can get more info. Uh, next concern was from, uh, about the EUU Street Kayak Business Ward. Uh, shared several pictures of the continued kayak rentals of Ohana kayak. Ish, uh, and after the DLNR, a DoBar cease and desist order was issued. In fact, they have increased their operation in the number of kayaks and advertisements online. They load kayaks on the street, affronting their house and blocking the street as their, their customers walk their kayaks up and down EUU Street. Uh, and it kinda goes on, but, so our DPPs, our reply was, DPP is coordinating actions for a follow-up investigations at, of the house, and also coordinating more police HPD patrols on EUU Street. Next one was a concern about Kualoa Ranch. At the last meeting, John Morgan of Kualoa Ranch and Barbara Natal of G70 reported that they had submitted a modification to their condition to use permit. Several Board Members asked if the community had a chance to review or comment on the CUP mod application, and also how can the community make input on, to DPP about their impacts on their operation, of their operation on the community and the environment. So the DPP response is, DPP has not received an application for a minor modification to the existing CUP for Kualoa Ranch. File number eight-five slash CUP dash fifteen. That's the CUP file number. So that we have not received an application for mod. The public, including the Neighborhood Board, may review and comment on the application once it is received for processing. However, there is no mandated notification process. We encourage Board Members to contact the Land Use Permits Division of DPP at eight-zero-eight seven-six-eight eight-zero-one-five for the status of the application. Next one is, uh, HK Development Percolation Tests. Ken Lavassar reported the violation of two houses built at the HK property, despite the property failing their percolation tests, what would allow these homes to be built despite failing this test? And what should the community do to report violations? So at, uh, uh, we did not have the addresses of the two homes, I got that from Ken today. So we'll follow up, so thank you Ken for getting me that info. Uh, and then we'll follow up for next, uh, Board Meeting. And then, Special Management Areas, John Rapun mentioned special districts across Oahu with SMAs and voiced an interest in getting an SMA for Kahului to help address development, wastewater cesspools and other issues that he's seen growing throughout his life. What city office would have more information on SMAs? What do they, what they do and how they are formed? So the DPP answer is, the Department of Planning and Permitting, Land Use Permits Division, would be able to assist Mr. Rapun with his questions related to SMA in Chapter Twenty-Five, in SMA permits. Uh, should you have any questions, please contact the Land Use Permits Division at eight-zero-eight seven-six-eight eight-zero-one-five.
Can I interject, so I wasn't looking for anything to do with SMAs, although what I was looking for is special design districts.
Oh, okay, they can help you with that too.
Okay, 'cause I mean, it may well be very likely that, um, a special design district would include areas within the SMA, within this coastal zone. But, but the real question is, how do special design districts work on the county level? I know they potentially also exist on the state level and maybe even, I don't know, but yeah, so maybe we can continue that conversation a little bit, yeah.
So John, that, um, the Land Use Permits Division,
Okay.
that, that's the same group that handles special design districts?
Okay.
Like Waikiki or Punch Bowl.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
And next, next one was from Clifford Lu. Sidewalk clearing on Kamame Highway. Clifford reported that the sidewalks along Kamame Highway stretching from Heia Kea Pier to Haiku Road are in need of clearing and are hazardous and for handicapped pedestrians. Information online suggests property owners would be responsible for their budding sidewalks, is that true for sidewalks on highways? The DPP answer to this, the stretch of Kamame Highway between Heia Kea Old Harbor and Haiku Road is under the jurisdiction of City County Honolulu. Although many of the properties in this area have dual-street frontages, the owners do not have reasonable access to the sidewalk along Kamame Highway. Property owners with access are required to maintain the sidewalk area. City sidewalk ordinances do not apply to state roads and highways. Uh, we will refer this to DFM to address the maintenance issue. Um, the next two concerns, they were for DTS and state highways. A crosswalk request for Kamame Highway at Heia Kea Pier. Uh, Anti-Rocky requested the crosswalk be installed going across Kamame Highway to serve bus riders. So, uh, we didn't get a response from DTS in time for the meeting. Then the second one on, from DTS is highway drainage inlets, drainage inlets and shoulders near seven, no, four-seven-eight-five-three Kamame Highway need to be cleaned to allow water runoff from heavy rains to drain in the drainage, to drain into the drainage inlets. Currently, the cross slope, I think this is one for that, the person, the lady that was, uh, yep, okay, yeah, so they have yeah, they haven't, we haven't gotten a response that, from that one. That was the other one. And then the last one was Kalo Park. Peter asked about the chain gate and no trespass sign blocking Kalo Park be removed. Some type of arrangement be made with the community for access. So Parks and Rec, their response is, there are, there are two Kalo Parks under DPR's jurisdiction. First is Kalo Place Mini Park located at one-zero-seven-two Kalo Place, and the second is Loi Kalo Mini Park located at one-two-four-three Loi Kalo Place. Please clarify which park you are referring to so we may correctly respond to inquiry.
Peter.
Okay, maybe I'll just get with you later. Okay, okay, that's all I got, um, but, uh, Chair, we, I can take any new, new concerns.
Any concerns from the members?
Not new, but looking for an update on the guardrail that, uh, I sent you pictures of coming out of Heia Kea. Anything stirring there?
Out of the Heia Kea Pier?
As you come out of Heia Kea Valley, I mean towards Kahului, remember I sent you pictures and the pool number, and, um,
That's the one, uh, on the Makai side?
Yeah.
I think DFM told me they're, they, they, I reported on that, they're gonna put it out.
Okay.
And they included in the next, uh, visit, I'll go try and look at my notes and then
Just, just wondering on the timing.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, the timing, I don't know when they're gonna do it, but I, they said they're gonna, they did check it out, and they're gonna add it to the
It's warranted, yeah, okay.
They said it was warranted.
Um, and then, um, Joe, since you're here, I just, Joe Watt's here, we're, we've all been working on little fire ants. Um, the property that we've been concerned about, uh, Wahein Marsh, right, Sungan Toranas, um, now has an infestation of little fire ants. So I, I wanted to raise that here because where are they coming from? Well, when you have trucks bringing material up and down the coast, that's, that's a concern, so I just wanted to raise that, the, uh, you know, the fallout from, from, um, transporting of materials, including illegal fill and so on, um, can, can, could be, could be the source, that's a huge concern. We have to be paying attention as a county on the movement of materials, whether it's dirt, equipment, um, you know, mulch and so on, so I just wanted to draw that, draw your attention to that fact. So we now need to, as a community, be very concerned, because if little fire ants are down there on the highway, where else, we're gonna have to start testing. We should be doing anyway, all up Wailehua Road, up and around Ahilama Road and so on. Um, we're trying to nip this in the bud, the Council just passed a resolution, you know, calling for, for the county to pay much closer attention to invasives. Um, and we have an event coming up that we'll talk about a little later, um, where we're trying to draw on the, the, uh, the experience, the expertise of the Maui Invasive Species Committee that's worked really closely with County of Maui on this issue, so we wanna draw the county into this, um, into this effort to deal with the tipping point. Yes, yeah, well, let, how about you do that, Joe, here. Yeah, Joe?
Aloha, sorry, I don't know, we're, so on, um, February twenty-ninth at two PM, um, we're meeting with some of the council members in order to, uh, we've we've, we're bringing in people from the Maui Invasive Species Committee. Uh, they have, uh, gotten some solid support from the counties and have, uh, I think the best framework for the interaction between an island invasive species council and a county level infrastructure for successful invasive species management. I mean, considering the city council resolution, it would be awesome if we could have mayoral representation there. So I'll reach out with, to you with more information on that. Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else with questions for Jiro? Uncle Ken?
Uh, yes, Jiro, uh, could you repeat, uh, for people who got here a little bit later after your, uh, comments on, um, the kayak lady? Uh, what, what was being done about it? Uh, another update quickly, because some people have gotten in touch with me, they missed that part of your speech, your comments.
So we're trying, we're, we're coordinating, uh, a follow-up inspection of the, uh, the house and the rental activity from our side on DPP. And also, uh, getting police to patrol that, that UU Street to, uh, more often to, uh, give tickets or warnings to, uh, the people that are carrying their kayaks to and from and blocking the road and causing traffic problems.
Did DLNR say there was an increase, uh, in kayak business or something? I thought I heard that. Was there any, is, is it stable, what she's doing? Has she shown any signs of stopping?
That, I don't know. Um, the, the DoBar guys are, I guess, monitoring the activity, um, the bay, so. But I did report it to them, what happened at the last, uh, meeting, and I did talk to the DoBar guys. So they said they would follow up.
Yeah, the, yeah, that'd be a DoBar follow-up, Ken. We can have, um.
Thank you.
And we'll get the follow-up from Jiro soon.
Thank you.
Would you? Uncle Cliff?
Okay. We get somebody doing landfill of Kamamei Highway. Now the, the fuel of that property is level with the road. It's all wetland, you know that? This property, where it's wetland property that a dog, the animal child is supposed to be.
The, the former.
Yeah. So they go on excavating in there with about two containers, metal containers in there. But I, I just passed, they, they brought fuel in.
Okay, so maybe actually John Rapun knows more.
Uncle John?
Clifford, we kind of covered that. Um, Jiro folks have, have brought a halt to that activity, uh, last month. And, and so, you know, I think we covered, uh, they haven't done anything since DPP stepped in.
We could get new fuel inside.
Not, not, not for the last month and a half, no.
I just, I just confessed this evening.
I know. Yeah, I, I drive by it every day.
No, we got, we, uh, we got, uh, remember never have meeting in December? Yeah. Well, I got several calls from Ken and John in December about that very thing. And then we, uh, we finally got our inspectors out there and they figured out how they, they were kind of, I don't know how I want to say this because it's being recorded, so I better watch what I say. Anyway, we found out what was allowed and not allowed based on what was represented, whether they had a permit or didn't have a permit. And we actually recited them, the property owner. So, uh, as far as we know, we issued a stop work order and they have stopped. Um, that's, that's been our last, about the last month.
So the field that they brought in about five years ago, start of their project, what are you gonna do with it? Leave it there?
That, I think we have, we still have to, they have to come up with a remedy.
I think it's supposed to come up with a remedy.
They, the property owner. In other words, they were, they were cited for bringing in illegal fill and to remedy it, you need to take it out. But you just cannot just dig and take it out. You have to come up with a, actually a construction plan or a grading plan. That's gonna explain what to do, what they're gonna do. So, right now, they're, they have this stop work order. So they're not supposed to do anything until they actually apply for a grading permit. We issued a permit and then they can do it as the corrective action.
Because every once in a while, like you're excavated, moving around inside, yeah? You want inside, yeah, then it's no.
If you hear, if you hear it, give us a call and we'll send inspectors out. That's what John and Ken did over the holidays.
Okay. Thanks, Uncle Cliff. Um, we did have a hand up online from Ward. Did it, did that go down? Okay.
It went down, he had it up.
Okay. Ian, Ian, go ahead, you had a hand up.
Well, just to concur with, uh, Clifford, I think I did see some new three B course kind, or, um, uh, gravel laid down. I, you know, there were, there are two containers there that I just saw that I thought, gee, I hadn't seen those before, but I could be wrong. Um, I just, yeah, John, I don't know, I just thought I saw that myself the other day and it surprised me. But, um, I would have to go back and look.
Thanks, Ian. Uh, Uncle Ken, quick one?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, the remediation has to deal with what Clifford mentioned. Five years ago, they filled the road, the ax, a farm access road up to a height that it became a dam. Okay, and that remediation has to drop that road back down so it's no longer a dam because it's causing flooding in the community. And we want to go on record, uh, as part of this remediation, to make sure that they put that road, that farm road, down to what it was as a farm road rather than an all-weather road, which was their intent. And they attempted to get a permit for it, thank you.
Thanks, Uncle Ken. Anybody else question for Jiro? Uncle Rick?
Um, just a clarification on the drainage over here on Kamamei Highway. Talked to Donna about, um, the problem, it, it's, it's actually a part of the highway that's, that's, uh, under the jurisdiction of state DOT. So apparently a guy came out, talked to Donna about, um, looked, looked the situation over and said that, um, they could deal with some of it with, with repaving, but that repaving would not occur until the roundabout construction is completed. So I told Donna, um, I had just tried to get a hold of, um, um, Ed Sniffin about coming out to look at the whole situation because I have a, um, a repair for it that I think will work. Um, so she, she said, I, I, we agreed that she would give me this young gentleman's, the inspector's information. Maybe I can talk to him, but basically there's a drain inlet on the Maoka side of the road, a little bit Wailehua side from her driveway and the driveway where all the water's coming from. Uh, there's an eighteen-inch reinforced concrete pipe that goes down towards the ocean. So we need to find out where that comes out. And if it just goes straight down across the highway, um, there's a potential for, for excavating around the pipe, putting a drain inlet on the Makai side of the highway low enough to where the drain water, it comes off of that Maoka side driveway can get directed into that drain inlet and then put a berm across her driveway, um, so that storm water will be directed into the drainlet rather than onto her property and, and damaging, um, structures and so forth. So we're in the process of getting that hap, making that happen as soon as I get the, um, information from her, from this inspector.
Okay, Rick, that was, Chair, can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Jiro.
So that was for the forty-seven, eight fifty-three Kamamei Highway. Okay, so you're, you're waiting on who?
The, she's gonna give me the information of the DOT inspector that came out to look at it, the young guy. So my sense is that if I can, he, he's kind of a little bit, you know, new at the, at the job. So if we can make it his idea and then he can push the thing through, then, then he gets a, he gets a pat on the back and, and we get the job done. So that's the, that's the MO, follow.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jiro? Okay, thank you, Jiro.
Great, thank you, Jiro.
Moving on, uh, Councilmember, uh, Saki Aina.
Hello, can everybody, can everybody hear me?
Any representative?
Hello?
Oh, Jaren.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Jaren McCartney. I'm a legislative aide to Councilmember Kia Aina. Um, she's out of town traveling, so I'm just gonna give a brief report for her. Uh, she wanted me to start off with Bill sixty-four, um, twenty twenty-three, which is, uh, amending the land use ordinance. And as Chair of the Planning and the Economy Committee, Councilmember Kia Aina will be having hearings on various uses in the land use ordinance. The Planning and the Economy Committee, uh, will be meeting to discuss more residential uses at their next committee meeting on March seventh, twenty twenty-three at nine AM. She is anticipating hearing agricultural uses later this year, either in May or June. If you have any questions, you can contact Councilmember Kia Aina's office at, uh, seven six eight five zero zero three. And I'll put, um, her contact information in the chat box shortly. Uh, secondly, she wanted to talk about, um, Resolution twenty-three, uh, dash three zero eight, uh, relates, which relates to advancing the efforts of invasive species control at the City and County of Honolulu. Um, Councilmember looks forward to hearing the city administration's report on their efforts after the passage of her invasive species, uh, resolution, uh, which will likely be in six months. Um, she would like to thank DPR Director Thielen for working with the Oahu Invasive Species Committee on potentially establishing a base yard at Ho'omaluhea Botanical Garden, uh, which Councilmember has been advocating for. She is pleased that, uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation is working together with the Oahu Invasive Species Committee on establishing a base yard at Ho'omaluhea. And lastly, um, she wanted to briefly talk about what was discussed earlier. And she wanted to thank the key project organizers, Joe Watt and Uncle John, uh, for inviting the Maui Invasive Species Council to participate at their upcoming panel discussion on little fire ants. Uh, Councilmember Kia Aina has organized meetings between, uh, the Maui Invasive Species Council, Oahu Invasive Species Committee and various city departments, uh, including the Mayor's Office of Economic Revitalization, Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resilience, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. And she believes it's a great opportunity for the Maui Invasive Species Council to share how they work with Maui County on invasive species management. And that is all I have, and I'm glad to take any questions back, uh, to the council member.
Any questions for Councilmember Kia Aina? Uncle John?
Hi, Jaren. Um, just real quick, um, as far as those who might attend the, uh, February twenty-ninth, two PM meeting, I'm looking at you. I'm thinking, one of the items that's moving through the legislature, maybe, um, has to do with disclosure from the real estate industry. If you're selling a house, um, have you tested for, has your house been tested for little fire ants? Have there been any infestations and so on? And, um, what I'm, I guess my, my comment or my question really goes to, where might the county have a little more jurisdiction? A little more opportunity to help to flush out where infestations are? So I don't really have an answer to that, but it's something to think about. Um, Jiro, kind of looking at you on this too, planning and permitting, um, where, where, where might that interface be? Because it seems like we can do a lot more to, um, to, to know where infestations are within residential areas and business areas and so on. So just that, thanks.
Thanks, Uncle John. Thanks, Jaren. Um, before we move on to, um, Councilmember, um, Matt Wires' office, we did want to just go ahead and let Jiro come back up to the mic and, uh, give his announcement, uh, regarding Uncle, um, Uncle Rick's question earlier.
So, uh, Rachel gave me the, the updated mayor's report for the, the crosswalk at Kamamei Highway at Heia Kea Pier. So that, the one anti-rocky requested the crosswalk. So DTS's response is the portion of Kamamei Highway falls on the jurisdiction of the cities, falls on the city's jurisdiction. DTS will conduct a study, which will include obtaining, broadening, lighting data for bus stop seventeen fifty-four located on the Maoka side of Kamamei Highway to determine if a marked crosswalk is warranted. They will inform the board of their findings at the August twenty twenty-four meeting. And, uh, follow-on about the highway drainage inlets, uh, question, DTS's response is this portion of Kamamei Highway falls under this, uh, Hawaii DOT jurisdiction. Refer this to H, H dot.
Thanks, Jiro.
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Um, uh, Jiro, the bus stop across from the entrance by the Maoka side of Kamamei Highway from the entrance to, um, Heia Kea Pier is demolished, flat, roof on the ground, totally smashed. I'm sure they know it, but that is an indication that I'm sure Rocky would like to have something to say about why it's smashed and others too, but there's gotta be a reason. And it has something to do with the crosswalk. So I suspect, I suspect, but that's only from years of being transportation and infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Uncle Ken, and thank you, Jiro, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to, um, Councilmember Matt Wires' office, any, uh, representative or is the council member present?
Chair.
Oh, do you have someone present online?
Can, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hi, um, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires' office. Thank you for having me. Um, just a couple, um, I guess, updates from Councilmember. Um, we recently held a homeless informational briefing in, um, the Sustainability and Health Committee. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and send, um, a link in the chat so you can go ahead and, um, view the briefing if you would like. If you, um, missed the, uh, committee meeting as well. Um, also, Councilmember, um, well, along with City Council, we'll be starting budgets, um, soon. So if you have any projects that you would like to see in the district or anything, um, comes to mind, please feel free to reach out to our office. I'll go ahead and put my email and phone number in the chat as well. And then lastly, I will also be including, um, it's actually coming up in a couple of days, the Turtle Bay Scholarship for, um, any students in the North Shore area. So if you know any, um, any students, um, that could benefit from the scholarship, please feel free to, um, have them apply. But it is coming up, the deadline is in two days on the sixteenth, so, um, time is of the essence. So, um, yeah, make sure you get that to them soon. And then lastly, um, last month, um, I believe just the board in general had asked about the Aha Pua'ua signage. Um, there's, uh, let's see, Heia Kahaloo Boundary. Um, so, uh, DFM's, uh, road maintenance said that they will, um, be replacing these signs. And, um, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, also, and the Kahaloo Wahehe Boundary as well. Um, so once the signs are fabricated, they will be installing them. But like with a lot of city, uh, departments, it's when the, uh, uh, resources become available. Um, if I'm not mistaken, generally that means, um, the sign installation crew, I believe there's only like one or two on the island. So, um, but it's in, it's in the works, so it'll get done soon, hopefully. Uh, and that's about it for me. If you have any questions for a council member, um, I will help you to take that back to him.
Any questions for Kelly?
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Kelly. And moving on to, um.
Well, um, I think somebody has a question.
Sorry about that. Member messages in, yeah.
Um, Kelly, uh, uh, Matt and Lisa came out to District One to our, uh, neighborhood in Haki Pulu and, and had a great meeting in December, uh, with a bunch of constituents. And so I just wanted to know if there's any follow-up on that. And, um, your offices, feel free to give me an email if there was on any of the questions and, and discussions that we had at that meeting.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Ian, and thanks, Kelly, appreciate it, thanks for the time.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to Border Water Supply, Representative Barry Uzagall.
I have, uh, seen a couple, a couple items to report this month, no main breaks though. Um, we have a construction project that we're planning, uh, up in Waheh. Yeah, replacing, uh, three, four, four-inch diameter, so small valves in a pipeline in Upper Waheh Valley. And, uh, some of the work involves, um, is, is within the stream bank, but the high watermark, not in the stream itself. And it required a state, um, stream channel alteration. And it required a state uh stream channel alteration permit, which was approved by the Water Commission two weeks ago. And Chair Don Chang asked me to inform the community, so I'm following up. Uh, mitigation measures will, will be um in place to protect the stream as required. And the other part of that project is we need to replace the chlorinator um off of Wahe Tunnel. So it's in a shack. We're gonna move it into a secured fenced area. It's basically in the old well site by the ice pond. So that project will start um at the end of this year or early next year in twenty twenty-five. So I just wanted to inform you folks about that. Uh, and the second announcement is that we um re-increased uh our toilet rebate to a hundred dollars per toilet. Um, this is only for a limited time um to, through April eighteenth. Um, we wanted to incentivize uh and get more um of those high-flow toilets, you know, out of, out of, out of commission. And so it's for, the rebate is for a water sense label toilet, a one point two eight gallon per flush and a toilet, uh, limited to four per household, uh, ten for commercial customers, so they apply to commercial as well. Uh, for more information about that, go to uh borderwashsupply.com or slash rebates. And that's my report. I'll be hope, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Barry. Any questions? Any questions online? Showing none, moving forward. Um, we do have Governor Josh Green, uh, Representative Scott Murakami's office. Oh, we actually have uh DHL Deputy Director Katie Ducat.
Hi, uh, yes, Katie uh Ducat here for uh Governor Josh Green. And um, some highlights from the governor's newsletter. Um, we did start the twenty twenty-four legislative session. He delivered his State of the State address on the twenty-second. Um, the address proposed legislative and executive action to support further recovery for the people of Maui, to make housing more available and affordable for Hawaii residents, and to reduce homelessness and to lower the cost of living in our state. Um, he also highlighted some of his administration successes in the past year. Um, the start of Phase One of the Green Affordability Plan. His team negotiated a new four-year contract with this Hawaii State Teachers Association. He signed the emergency proclamation on housing to immediately approve approximately ten thousand eight hundred units of low-income housing for struggling families. And he also created the Maui Recovery Fund to rapidly provide funds to families who lost loved ones or suffered serious injuries in the fires. He initiated Pulama Ola, the first medical respite kauhale that provided invaluable lessons which will be used at additional kauhale to set open across the state to address homelessness, and conducted the first significant gun buyback initiative in the state to remove five hundred firearms from Oahu's streets. And his newsletter is available online, but also I brought some hard copies. Um, and I am here to address any um or take any questions or comments back to the governor's office. Thank you.
Any questions for the governor's office? Uncle John.
So thanks for the report. It's nice to see reports like this in writing. Um, I see the native species survival um highlight, which is great. Where's the invasive species highlight? Without.
I can take that.
Without that.
Yes.
Uh, native species are going down for the count. Um, that's a really, really important issue where, you know, as you well know, whether it's laina and grasses or, or pokey frogs or coconut rhinoceros beetle, you, you know the drill. So, yeah, really important. Lots of measures uh moving through the legislature and um getting a sense of what the governor will step up to support. Early on, it's, I think, gonna be really important for both those who are testifying in those legislative hearings and the uh departments themselves. Um, I wanna go back to the question I had for Jiro talking about um special design districts. I um, I'd really be interested to know what exists on the state level, because of course, state and county jurisdictions overlap big time, especially in areas like the coastal zone, um, where you have county-level ordinances, you have state-level laws, um, and even federal-level laws. So knowing what, how special-designed districts um might be crafted, um, knowing how the um, the Office of Planning and Sustainability in particular um can coordinate with Department of Planning and Permitting at the county level, and also at the federal level. Because um, again, all these jurisdictions overlap. Um, the, the, the area that we're looking at here, that's really under the most duress, I would say, is from Kahalaya to Ahu Imanu, where we have the highest density of cesspools in the state. And um, and, and there are a number of initiatives. I've mentioned over and over again. The Kahalu Watershed Work Plan goes back to nineteen sixty-nine, still in effect, not, never a closed project. County, state, that's, we're all involved in that project. Um, we need to revisit it. Uh, we need to, in that, in that process of looking at watershed planning, um, we're gonna, we would need to be looking at stream flows, we'd be looking at total maximum daily loads into Kanuei Bay, class double-eight waters, nearshore waters, wetlands, cesspools, all of that. Right now, all those kids who go paddling every day with Kiaki, Kiaki Akahoi, New Club are endangering their own lives. Hate to say that, but that's the truth. The water is so polluted in the nearshore area of Kanuei Bay, and particularly in our area. So we really, really need um state, county-level planning coordination. And the governor needs to, the governor's a doctor, so he should understand the health concerns that are associated with all of this. Uh, the last thing I'll say is, you know, Kindy Sproat on the Big Island, we were one time listening to him talk about how Aha Pua'awa work. You have sponges at the top, you got filters at the bottom. If we don't take care of the sponges and the filters, we're, we're dead in the water. So, thanks.
Thanks, Uncle John. Uh, just a quick one, on, on Ken, online?
Uh, yes, I'd uh, I'd like to thank the governor for his excellent commentary. I think it was Channel Two News a few days ago. His comments on the constitutionality of that particular law, and then uh Senator Jared Kao Hukaloli's uh ideas of uh going in and investigating and such. I, I think it's a great idea for working together because they're looking at the cause of home, of houselessness. Maybe not so much homelessness. They do allude to the causes of homelessness, which are people are dedicated to not living in a structure. That's homelessness, but you also have people who are on the street because they have no house and no houses available to them. And really, thank the governor for standing up and finally addressing that. And things like the constitutionality of, of the laws that are not addressed early end up slowing down the process. And he's right to speak up now, and I really, really appreciate it. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Ken.
Great.
I just wanted to put on the table, um, maybe the governor and mayor, since they're talking and all that kind of good stuff, um, to start thinking about what we do about, um, do we take a whole um, that's in um ship and just seize all the containers and go through every single container on one load and try to understand where the illegal fireworks are, how the illegal fireworks are coming in, how the fentanyl is coming in, how the illegal alien species are coming in? Because we just can't not do anything. We have to try somewhere. So anyway, you might just suggest that as some kind of a means. I mean, if we could creatively come up with something like that, then, then we could address it legislatively and then um go from there, but we gotta do something. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Rick. Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to uh Senator Brenton Awang. Any representative online from Senator's office? Okay, seeing none, moving forward to Representative Uzagall. Rep. You online?
Hi, it's me. I'm Wendy. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Okazaki. I'm the Office Manager for Rep. Kitagawa. So I have some updates from the legislature that she wanted to share with you guys. Um, just going over some of the bills that she introduced specifically related to this district. The first one would be HB eighteen ninety-eight relating to cesspool conversions. Um, there's also HB twenty-one seventy-five relating to search and rescue, which she's trying to address illegal hikers. Uh, HB twenty-one seventy-five relating to the Kahalava Ha'ula Community-Based Long-Range Transportation Plan. And lastly, HB two-six-four-four relating to little fire ants. Um, so those are the bills specifically for the district. Uh, Rep. Kitagawa also wanted me to share about the little fire ant canvassing which occurred this past Saturday. So um, she and the other reps coordinated a group of volunteers to canvas areas around Kanuei with known infestations. So they passed out free test kits to residents and educated um anyone they were able to talk to, the people who answered their doors. Um, and if any of you would like to get a test kit, it's free. You just have to go to the Hawaii Little Fire Ants website at StopTheAnt.org. And then lastly, if you have any questions, I can take them back to the office and relay them to the rep. Um, we can get back to you at the next meeting. You can always email our office at Rep. Kitagawa at capital.hawaii.gov. That's all I have for updates, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy? Thanks, Wendy. Have a good night.
I think uh Ian had questions.
Sorry, I keep getting pushed out. Um, hey, uh, real quick, Wendy, same, same question for you. If we could communicate uh to follow up on our meeting that was really great in December, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think some of the issues that were state-related, Summer was gonna email us. Um, we didn't get any email from her, so if you see her, tell her to just send us that.
I think she might be on too, so um.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and uh, sorry, I thought, I thought it was the other way around.
Yeah.
No worries, my bad. Um, I'll go ahead and through with Summer and you, and you as well. Thank you.
I'll put our email in the chat. I think I see her online, so just feel free to email us anytime.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Thanks, Wendy. Um, is there anyone else with any questions? Okay, moving forward to uh the Wimmer Community College, the Chancellor Artist. I can bird. Hi, Artist.
Hi, thank you so much. I have two events and a bill, which sounds like a British game show, two events and a bill. So, the first event I have is our theater, the only conservatory preparation in the state of Hawaii, is having a really fun performance coming up. It's Kimo the Waiter, world premiere by Lee Cataluna. Kimo loves acting, he's good at it. He dedicates himself to his crafts, auditions relentlessly. He'll do whatever it takes, but he's always too brown, not brown enough, or just not enough. How many times can one play The Waiter? Set in nineteen eighties Honolulu, Kimo the Waiter follows a man in love with the dream of a world where everything with it is within reach. You just have to want it enough. That starts February twenty-third. I'll put a link in the chat for that when I'm done. It'll be really fun. It's Fridays and Saturdays, seven thirty PM, and Sunday at three o'clock for three weeks. Friday, not every week, I think. So, oh no, two weeks, sorry. Thank you. And then another thing we have coming up really soon is a library talk on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, from eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five at our beautiful library. Please come join us. We'll have a presentation, short reads Hawaiian Journal of History Authors series. And our very first one will be Nanette Napoleon on Hawaii Sons of Civil War, which is about Hawaiians who chose to go to the continent and fight in the civil war. They heeded the call to arms. Should be very interesting. And then I wanted to share, we have two bills actually that support Windward Community College before the legislature this year. The first is the overall UAH omnibus budget, which is part of the overall state budget. That has, hopefully, will get through our three positions for our incarcerated program, which serves the Women's Community Correctional Facility, the Women's Community Correctional Center, Hawaii Youth Correctional Facility, and Halava Correctional Facility. That is part of the overall UH budget within the state budget. And then we have a specific bill, HB eighteen twenty-six, which provides for um one year of positions for our mental health tech program so as to pilot it statewide, take it across the state. It's a short training. This year, we're adding a one-year certificate to the initial three-class certificate. And we're about to pilot this in a cohort of adult corrections officers, utilizing trauma-informed strategies as well. So very impactful program. It's House Bill eighteen twenty-six. It's part of the House omnibus package. And it's been heard, it'll go to House Finance next. That's everything I have. If anyone has any questions, thank you, guys. Always enjoy getting to come to the Kahalulu Neighborhood Board. Lots of love in this house.
Thanks, Chancellor. Appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you. Have a good night. Um, moving forward to the uh Kanuei Bay Regional Council, Uncle Cliff, any reports?
Yeah, uh, last, last month, we had Smokey meeting. It was kinda exciting too, because we had one, uh, what do you call that? Zoom bombing. It was unreal. I mean, nobody should have thought about it, you know? Everybody in this, it freaked out, man, because this, they, it was a group of ghosts to any. But anyway, we talked about the marine base, what the aircraft did damages. The damages were there wasn't as bad as Maui. They, they replaced, they planted, they grafted a bunch of coral there. And they, they're going back again, because the damages grew, grew, manu, it's grew small, you know, so they can do grafting. So, I don't know, and they talked about, how about the Navy paying for it? You know, they can, they don't parent, free land, they can do something for the community. And one other one too that came up throughout the civic club, we had one. This guy, you know, Rob, tune in, tune in, from Universal Way. He came up with this, not him, but they, they came up with for this erosion, land erosion. And I don't know, some of you might have seen the Kolo Beach Park, they get these concrete blocks in the water. It's similar to that, but only thing is a little bit bigger and you can grab coral to that thing and you grow, press it in this concrete, jump, they put it into the ocean. And they had a small demo. One over there was pretty good. It's effective. It's, you know, until somebody come up with another idea. But so far, it looks good, but you need a lot of area, you know, put that thing in the water, and then, you know, you can grab the coral to that. I don't mean any. So it, it looks way better than a two-block-high coral, coral tile in Kolo. So, that's all I got to say on, for Kanuei Bay, because it's just waiting, because, you know, no more. No more security, eh? Everybody, no more manpower.
Right on. Thanks, Uncle Cliff. Any questions for the Kanuei Bay Regional Council? Okay, seeing none, moving forward. Um, we do have uh the Heiki's uh Pierre in Smallville Harbor, uh Tanya Barbara. Is she present in person or online? Not seeing anyone present. Moving forward to uh, uh, US Congresswoman uh Jo Tukuda's office. Any representative from, uh, Representative Tukuda's office? Seeing none, moving forward, uh, we do have the Kanuei Marine Corps Base, uh, Gunnery Sergeant Orlando Perez. Nobody online or in person? Okay, moving forward to um, community topics, um. Uh, first one is gonna be um Senate Bill two-seven-zero-eight relating to civic engagement. Um, this is just something that I wanted to bring up and put on the agenda. Um, this is a Senate bill that's being introduced by um Senator Chris Lee uh of Waimea Manalo and Kaileua. Uh, basically, it's um to propose um high school students to be incorporated into the neighborhood board on each board. And so it would propose um two representatives from the uh District High School uh to be basically voting board members. Um, and I don't think right now it has any um hearings scheduled for it, but I did just wanna put it on your folks' radar, uh, make you folks that um aware that that is uh being discussed and that is an idea that's being tossed around um amongst the Neighborhood Board Commission. Yeah. Any questions or concerns on that? That's Senate Bill two seven zero eight, if you guys are concerned. But, okay, moving forward to Do we have Jim Hayes online to discuss planning solutions and the Scherzinger SMA? At forty-seven dash zero eight-three Comahamaha Highway? Jim not, Jim is not present, okay? So we'll defer that. Moving on to any residents' community concerns. Anyone in the audience? Just go ahead and state your name.
Aloha, my name is Joe Watt and I work here at Key Project. I've been doing a lot of organizing with little fire ants. Mhala to the folks who talked about that a little bit earlier. The reason why I wanted to talk about it is because, as you folks know, we have been kind of working Up the road in order to manage the infestation over there, but It does seem like there are more ants down the hill over here. So we're gonna do what we can do. But before we were, when we came out to the Neighborhood Board meeting to encourage folks To be testing in their yards using the peanut butter sticks. It was a little bit less focused than everybody along this road. If we've got it at the top, we've got it at the bottom. It's an important thing for us to do to check all the houses that are in between. So everyone on the Neighborhood Board, if you have friends that are over there, we do have extra infrastructure compared to most folks For getting your yards tested. Instead of mailing your Ziploc bag, You can bring it to Key Project after you freeze it to kill all of the ants. Well, we have a special pipeline, Phil. Can you, will you wave the sample bag though? So we can get kits, but you can also just put peanut butter on one bus up hashi And then put it in a Ziploc bag, freeze it and bring it to Key Project. And then we'll get it to O S Q. You should get results in like three days.
So we still have lots of kits. We got a hundred kits and I've been giving them to people. I don't know who's returned them, but anyway, there are more kits. They'll be here at the next meeting.
Joe, you participated in the canvassing event.
I did.
This last weekend. What do you think about doing a community canvassing event for this area?
I think that that's something that I would love to do. If I'm going to be the lead organizer on it, it would have to be in April. So that's just the timeline that I've got. So I would be happy to do that. But that said, it's not that complicated and I would be very supportive of supporting anyone else who wants to do that door-to-door Knocking over here. I've got tips and tricks and we can do some of the sampling too.
Getting our elected officials to help with that. Of course, we're elected, so what am I saying? Yeah.
We did have several Neighborhood Board members when we were doing the door-to-door canvassing up there. So that was great and appreciated.
Just want to follow up real quick on that. I didn't actually go walking in that effort, but was there as they were getting organized and Had, you know, packets of information, test kits, maps of the community and then deployed out to given areas. Two people, even four people working together in groups, cars going along so that they could keep track and You know, all the, all the instructions about what to do about dogs and everything else you might run into, but it was a, it seemed like a really effective effort.
Yeah, those kits are a dollar seventy-eight each, so, and people can buy them by the five hundred or thousand In order to help the community effort. And we'll give them out to people, that's for sure.
Ours are free. I'm gonna hand anybody who wants one next time.
Perfect. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. We will also be having an event here on February twenty-ninth. We have Maui Invasive Species Council folks, HAL folks, the Hawaii Ant Lab, and then someone from Department of Agriculture talking about The technology that gives us a better chance now than we had twenty years ago. So it should be kind of an uplifting thing. There's a flyer up here, registration gets you a bento. So we hope to see you guys there. So the question was about maps and the best, the best maps right now are on stoptheant.org. That is something that we have. Sorry, I'm just answering. And then, so they have, they update that map probably two or three, every two or three months. They have been finding more infestations, but that's a good thing because none of the infestations happened in the last month. They've been around, so we're finding them, which is good.
Sorry. What? Sorry, if you could just, could you just ask a question in the mic? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
A map of where you've been. So if we, if somebody goes out and has test kits and wants to do a neighborhood, we don't want to keep doing it over and over. So do you have I don't know, a spreadsheet of where you've been with test kits?
I think that for community members that are trying to organize for little fire ant stuff, we're working out a protocol so that Like everyone can be helpful with those maps, with the canvassing information and like how, if we wanted to actually do some of the testing, What we've got to do for that as well. So the answer is not right now, but hopefully soon.
Rachel, I just sent you the flyer that Joe put together. We had sent out earlier to you asking for distribution. I sent it to your email, but I'm wondering if you could pop it up there because it has a QR code on it. Just want to draw people's attention to it. Joe added the QR code. That's really essential for people registering for that February twenty-ninth event. So we understand what we're looking at?
Oh, yeah, perfect. Yeah. Yeah, so we can scan the QR code on the physical flyer over there.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, go ahead Uncle Cliff.
I want to thank Joe and John. They did a fantastic job as not sure. I mean, nobody was watching. I don't think so. I watched.
You were watching on TV.
I said, all these guys way out there. Hey, it was good job, was good job, you guys.
Thanks for that note. Any other concerns from the community? Yeah, go ahead.
Maurice Muñoz, last week there was a headline article in the advertiser, findings from the Maui Police Department About problems during the, concerning the fire. And the headline in last week's article was communications key to improving response. What the article generally covered was the fact that the authorities were overwhelmed with calls And that there weren't enough civilian employees. Well, the issue is there are never enough civilian employees, nor are there ever enough employee, government employees, agency employees. It's up to the community to address the issues that would be involved in an emergency. And communications is a key one. We haven't had a ham testing program in the area for a while. But it should be coming up soon. So I will keep the board informed, community informed. You can go online, you can begin to learn how to get your license. A ham license is not this major Antenna thing that you have to have. It's just things that you should learn, the ham license in this. So we will be the key to protecting our and responding in our community if anything bad really happens. So that's the one thing. Tomorrow at the Kahalu, Kanioli Neighborhood Board, our D E M, Department of Emergency Management Director Is, has been invited to speak. He's got four topics to address, one of which I know is about They don't call them shelters anymore. They're like refuge, okay? And I know that's being addressed and I think communications is also being addressed. And I intend to attend that. Intend to attend that meeting and report back to you about what he has to say. So that was my main points on that. There is a Senate bill here and tomorrow, number twenty-nine seventy-two. That has something to do with a grandiose scheme to make future government buildings Resistance to, future buildings, resistant to a category five hurricane. Anything built after whatever, twenty twenty-five or something like that. And we were supposed to do support of this bill tomorrow. I personally don't support it. I think it's ridiculous. I asked that they spend more time and effort, they being the legislator, more time and effort in retrofitting buildings that we already have. And of course, something like Key Project is one of those.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions? Online? Seeing none. Any other community concerns from anyone in person or online? Okay. Okay, yeah, sorry. We'll do, we'll do more. Sorry, go ahead brother.
All right, I just wanted to bring into the community. Just state your name. Oh, sorry, I'm Philip Kapu. Just wanted to bring to the community's attention a couple of things. The history of Kahaloo is written in books at the destruction of a lot of our cultural sites. I just wanted to bring To the table again. Jim Hayes isn't here to talk about Nicole Scherzinger's property, which linear descendants of the community know that's Ahupua designation area between Heia and Kahaloo. And another important one on the docket now is Hundred thirty acre parcel was on Redfin and now, and then it wasn't and now it's back on again. I checked today. Pu Maileali, which is extremely important place. If you know any bit of Hawaiian culture, we refer to the moon as Mahina. Hina went to the moon here in Kahaloo on Pu Maileali. It's not only important to Kahaloo, but all of Hawaiian culture that we keep that place as untouched as possible. And it's being advertised. Could be someone's luxury estate one day. That should be a place of learning for all of us in our community and not somebody's getaway. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Quick comment for Uncle John.
Would you like us to put that on the agenda? It sounds like it's an important topic that we need to discuss. Is that, that's a concern if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask the chair? Is that what I do? Maybe ask the chair to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, we can, we can go ahead and make a note to mark that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Kind of echo that, having both the Scherzinger property And the hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-eight acre property that's for sale on Maileali. On the agenda, so Maileali issues both of them. You know, I'm really concerned that, that while they were, the Scherzinger property was on the agenda for this evening, nobody showed up. But The Scherzinger property is the one on the corner with, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Sorry.
That's not on the agenda. And so that's out of order.
Can I, can I finish?
Yeah, sorry.
Daniel, I have the floor. Can I finish with us? My concern is that we have not yet met the property owner. If this property is so important. I think that the Neighborhood Board should formally request Nicole Scherzinger to come to our Neighborhood Board meeting. She certainly has the means to be here. If she has the means to live in our community, she has the means to be here. And that's not to, that's not to challenge her, that's to invite her to come, come talk story with us as a community. And then, you know, and I think that's really important because we need to hear from her what her intentions are, what her leeway is. What are the opportunities that we might discuss with her about the disposition of that property? And, and I think that this ties into what else is happening in Maileali Ridge as a whole. I look at, I grew up on the side of Maileali Ridge, you know, and I see the whole of that ridge from Where Kakoevi is all the way here to Kahaloo as being a unit that we need to look at. Because there are multiple issues relating to that ridge. Everything from surveying for little fire ants to addressing obesia which are starting to come up On the south end and then on the backside of it and so on. So there's a lot to talk about with the stewardship and the management of Maileali. And I think that she might just be interested to find out the bigger picture from our community. So I'd like to see it be on the agenda as well.
Uncle Dan?
And I just want to reiterate, mine is just a point of order. In other words, I want to put it on the agenda. I don't disagree with her, I don't disagree with you, but for us to just chat about it without the person being present, that's, that's out of order.
Yeah, we can go. Thanks Uncle Dan. And thank you brother, appreciate it. Any other concerns from the community? Ian?
Yeah, just, I want to support Mr. Kapu and thank him very much for coming up and speaking about this issue. Obviously, it's, goes far beyond even the two examples that he mentioned. And last meeting was, was discussing the same thing in District One. Just to make the comment from the state level, the deal in our state historic preservation When they were made was charged with this inventory of state historic properties. And part of that mandate was to continue to monitor and to continue to update. And observe, you know, what's happening to these cultural sites. And so, you know, at some point, we might want to invite a representative from the State Historic Preservation Division To talk about the, really the, the desecration of sites all up and down, you know, on public property, private property And beyond, and especially with regards to private properties. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Kapu, for bringing that up and for requesting that put it on the agenda item. Perhaps someone from State Historic Preservation Division should be here for that agenda item next week. And just kind of reach out to Matt Wire, listening to his, his crew, just to say, yeah, or I'm sorry, to Lisa, keep the go to Wendy to say, at the state level, let's try and move forward with With higher level of protection for our cultural sites, please. Once gone, they're gone, every stone. Thank you.
Thanks Ian. We did have a hand up from a member of Mashado online.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in on that as well and just say I also agree With what Ian just said, and I also feel strongly about it, as Phil mentioned. Maileali is right behind where I live, where I was born, where I was raised. My family has been fighting against development back there for decades now. My grandfather Was there, present since Mr. Kawamoto, Japanese developer owned it And constantly tried to get in there, do their thing. And A and B got a hold of it after him. And then even the people that A and B sold it to, who are selling it now. They were all told they could only build one family dwelling there. And even these last people who are trying to sell it now Tried to slip through a multi-unit, small development. And it's conservation, like the conservation line is all the way up to my backyard. You know, everything behind there is, is conservation and For that reason alone, we need to try our best to protect it. Not to mention just the cultural significance, the historical significance, like our ancestors. So many, so many of our stories from here took part there, you know, and So much more are continuing to, like here, here in this neighborhood, the people who live here at the base of the mountain. We're, we're generational, you know, we're families who have been here for a long time. Like, I remember hearing the story about how my neighbor who passed away, he was the one who got the street Put in so that we could all be here, close to where our families came from. And it's kind of one of the reasons why I'm on the board now. It's because I want to continue that fight that my grandfather has been fighting For decades, you know, we need to start looking into this, like We're not, we're not going to get any more land here. And now they're looking at all of the land that's supposed to be protected. It's supposed to be. But now somehow, little by little, they're inching their way in. And that's also one of my main concerns for that development on the Scherzinger property. But now somehow, little by little, they're inching their way in. And that's also one of my main concerns for that development on the Scherzinger property. Like that opens the door, right? Oh, we already hit there that space. We can hit the rest of them now. Like, you know, you're like, it's very important for us to look at it that way. Like you, you, you set precedent by taking one of our culturally historic sacred spots and you, you get the right to develop on it. You get the permits passed. What's to stop them from using that as an example to get their permits to create a subdivision above our neighborhood that our infrastructure will never be able to handle? So like it, it's, it has nothing to do with personal feelings toward any individuals. It's, you really gotta think about it. There's nothing, there's almost nothing left. Like we're, we're already at the point where we're gonna start fighting for water soon. And we already are, you know, in ways, but like it's gonna be, it's gonna be an open fight. And like this kind of stuff is the reason it's happening. We need to protect what's left. We need to start focusing inward and doing these things, fighting these fights are how we get it done. So thanks, Phil, for bringing that up. You're awesome. Always appreciate you, bro. And that's all I have to say.
Yo.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Moving on to board business, um we just need an approval of the Wednesday, uh January tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Uh do I see a, have any motions to approve the? Do you have a motion from?
Second.
And second from uh Uncle John. I'll go ahead and take the vote. Um.
Okay, sorry. Discussion.
Is there any, uh yeah, no, is there any discussion or any um corrections or edits that anyone wanted to uh propose to the minutes online? We see none. Rachel for the vote.
Okay, so we'll take the vote. Bender? Yep. Vassar?
Aye.
Lu? Arthur McCuttle?
Aye, he's saying aye. He's raising his hand.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Kyongi?
Yeah, aye.
Masterson?
Aye.
Ripun? Toil? And Spencer. Okay, so the January minutes will be amended.
So Rachel, um okay, moving on to community announcements. Any community announcements from any of the members present or online? We see none. Uh any sub-district reports? Sub-district one?
Just real quick, we uh continue to work with uh in Wailei Waikani area. Um and out to Hakipu as well, um uh working on the albeja issue with the Kohla Mountain Watershed Partnership. That's the main thing, yeah.
Question is about a field trip at the Key Project on Friday? Okay. Oh, thank you. Um, sub-district two?
Okay, I'm sorry, one, one more thing.
Oh, no.
The uh EA for the uh Wailei Bridge Replacement Project is now out for public review, so. That's from the State Department of Transportation. Probably could find it online, yeah.
Things are done. Uh, sub-district two? Sub-district three? Report, uh, sub-district four, okay? Uh, sub-district five? Uncle Dan?
I just wanted to uh to suggest to everybody that we're kind of in a very difficult spot here because there are only ten of us and there are five vacancies. So that basically means that almost a hundred percent of the people present have to vote in favor of any motion. So if you know people who are interested in being on the neighborhood board, it's really important to get them to come out. Especially in my sub-district, there are two people missing, and in every other district. Otherwise, we're faced with having, needing a hundred percent in favor to pass any motion cause there are fifteen seats on the board and we need to have eight people voting to get it passed. So if you want us to take action on any issue, we need to fill these spots. That's about it.
Thanks for addressing that, Uncle Dan. Um, yeah, it is a critical issue that um we do need to address uh kind of a timely manner. And so I'm just echoing what Uncle Dan said. If you folks know anybody um who is willing or eager, um just go ahead, send them our way. Um, okay, and then sub-district six? Okay, uh moving on, uh announcements, just the regular uh board meeting is gonna be scheduled for next month. That's gonna be Wednesday, March thirteenth, uh twenty twenty-four here at seven PM at Key Project. We have a um.
Are we gonna have a party? Cause it's a birthday. It's a birthday that day. Are we gonna have a party?
I'm not aware of any party, Uncle Ken.
Oh, but there's, it's a birthday. We're at least gonna acknowledge a birthday, right?
Are you aware of someone's birthday?
Yeah, who's, who's the reddest, most blushed person in the room right now?
You go ahead and have a little, have a party for you, Uncle Ken. Okay, um. Your birthday. Any other announcements for members? Okay, um with seeing none, um, oh, Uncle Rick, go ahead. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, Uncle. I forgot to mention, who's on state transportation? Since, can somebody check? I've heard the buses that runs on this Wunard side, they're obsolete. Too old to be running on a road. All the new buses on the town side.
That's, that city, BTS.
We can, we can.
The thing I, the source I got it from, yeah, I asked him, I say, so who's doing the PUC? It's all in-house. So the crew, cheating the crew.
Yeah, we can go, Uncle Cliff, we'll follow up with Joe on that.
That's the, he said, all of, all of buses that just don't have Gooms bus here. The buses don't like I think the, on Kala aside, all the stu-, all the student gotta come out to the highway. Yes, this is school buses.
School buses.
School buses.
Oh, school buses.
And they don't, they're all, I think if you look at the bus, I mean, you know, it's kind of rundown.
That's all Roberts. That's all Roberts. And that's state, and it is under PUC.
Yeah, but the, the person that give the, you see, they get their own mechanics doing them.
We can, we can follow up with Wendy on that and get that information.
Actually, you gotta get somebody on outside looking inside.
Yeah.
Not, you know, not the inside inside.
Yeah.
You get some outsiders gotta go check on.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, with no other, uh with no further announcements, uh we're gonna adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Happy Valentine's, everyone.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Aloha, everyone.
Hello, everybody.